On Tuesday, we celebrated National Equal Pay Day with the Women’s Caucus, PAUH New York, CWA Local 1180, and advocates. It was an opportunity for us to come together and take stock of the progress we’ve made to advance pay equity here and across the nation while being clear how much work remains. In New York, for every dollar that a man makes, women earn an average of 74 cents. The disparity is even wider for women of color. Asian-American women make 69 cents for every dollar that a white man earns. For black women, that’s 63 cents. And for Latina women, it’s 49 cents for every dollar. And as I said the other day, women, we still can’t make a dollar. We’re working on it. Women make up to 60% of our frontline and municipal workforces, yet the women who keep our city running and many others are not being paid equally for their work. Last year, we began to make progress with the release of our Pay Equity Report and the subsequent legislative package we passed to address systemic disparities and occupational segregation within our own municipal workforce. We know there is still more work to be done, and this council will work together to advance equal access to opportunity and achieve pay equity for all. Now let us move on to our stated agenda. First, we will vote on the following finance items. A transparency resolution approving new designations and changes of certain organizations receiving funding in the expense budget. Next, we’ll vote on the following land use items. Otis Elevator Building, 260 11th Avenue, will facilitate a mixed-use office and ground-floor retail development expansion that will integrate and interconnect building segments to operate as a single building in Councilmember Botcher’s district. 521 East Tremont Avenue rezoning will facilitate the construction of a 14-story mixed-use building with approximately 205 affordable units, including 61 supportive housing units, ground floor, commercial, and community space, and approximately 14 parking spaces in Councilmember Felice’s district. 1880 through 1888 Coney Island Avenue rezoning, as a result of the applicant having withdrawn this application, the council will be voting to file these land use items to remove them from our calendar. Lastly, we will vote on the following pieces of legislation. Resolution 503B, sponsored by Councilmember Brannon, would call upon the New York State Legislature to pass and the governor to sign legislation that allows for the conversion of commercial units to residential units and creates the Affordable Housing from Commercial Conversions Tax Benefit Program. Next, Resolution 167A, sponsored by Councilmember Nurse, calls upon the New York State Legislature to pass and the governor to sign legislation to expand in New York’s 40-year-old container deposit law to include non-carbonated beverages, wine, and liquor. It would double the refundable deposit from 5 cents to 10 cents, further incentivizing the removal of recyclable plastic and glass bottles from New York’s waste streams. Resolution 515, sponsored by Councilmembers Natasha Williams, Amanda Farias, Shekhar Krishnan, and Shahana Hanif, recognizes the month of Ramadan annually in the city of New York and celebrates the significant role of Muslims in the multicultural fabric of New York City communities. Introduction 210A, sponsored by Councilmember Joanne Areola and Majority Whip Silvina Brooks-Powers, would help keep the city waterways clean and clear by amending the New York City Charter to create a marine debris disposal and vessel surrendering office. This will make it easier to clear city shores of vessels, often abandoned in the outer boroughs, and environmental justice communities like Jamaica Bay, Coney Island, the Arthur Kill, and the Kill Van Call. I now invite Councilmember Areola and Majority Whip Brooks-Powers to come forward and speak about their bill.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Good afternoon, everyone. Today, the Majority Whip and myself would like to discuss something that impacts the lives of New Yorkers in all five boroughs: the health and cleanliness of our waterways from Pelham Bay to Jamaica Bay. New York City’s waterways are littered with abandoned vessels and marine debris that are not only unsightly, but they are detrimental to the health of our waterways. Every day, these vessels leak oil and other chemicals into the water, while debris creates microplastics and other hazards to our sea life. That’s why we urge all of you to vote yes on Intro 210, which would create a dedicated Office of Marine Debris Disposal and Vessel Surrendering. Through the creation of that office, we as a city will be able to better streamline plans to remove and, if possible, recycle any debris or vessels left along our shores. Additionally, the office will establish a dedicated location for boat owners to leave unwanted vessels, providing a viable alternative to abandonment, and it will also develop recommendations for enforcement against people who do choose to illegally abandon their boats. This would be a tremendous step forward towards improving our waterways that all New Yorkers can now enjoy, and we hopefully will be able to enjoy for generations to come. That is why I stand here with the Majority Whip. We have spoken about this from the moment I was elected and before, when she was elected, and I’m so proud to be co-prime sponsors with her on this bill, as well as neighboring council members. Please.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Areola. And good afternoon, everyone. This city has a responsibility to preserve the safety and the beauty of our waterfronts. And today, the passage of this bill signals the priorities of this council, of our speaker, of my colleagues, and the city council, and I’m so excited for the bill that we’re going to pass today. But as my constituents and the Rockaways know, abandoned vessels and marine debris are not just an eyesore; they are an environmental risk and a danger to community members. New York is a city of water. New Yorkers deserve access to clean, safe water. Parents should not have to worry that their kids might get hurt on abandoned wreckage. That’s why this bill is so important. An Office of Marine Debris Disposal and Vessel Surrendering will empower the administration to address this problem and remove dangerous debris from our shores. This issue deserves the city’s sustained attention. By setting up this office, we’re making a long-term commitment to New Yorkers to remove and dispose of debris and to prevent this from happening in the first place. We look forward to working with the administration to stand up this office quickly and ensure its effective operation. Again, I thank Councilmember Areola for your advocacy on this issue, the Speaker for your leadership and support, and to my colleagues for their support on this crucial piece of legislation. Thank you.
Thank you so much, council members. Next, Introduction 876A, sponsored by our Housing and Buildings Committee Chair, Councilmember Sanchez, would amend language in the existing green building law to bring it in line with Local Laws 97 of 2019 and 154 of 2021. Various amendments include changing certain energy and consumption requirements, updating the definition section, changing the baseline inflation year, and streamlining administrative and reporting requirements. I invite Councilmember Sanchez to come forward and discuss her legislation.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. As Chair of the Committee on Housing and Buildings, I have the duty of facilitating the cleanup of the city’s technical construction and building codes to ensure that our codes make sense and are continuing to keep New Yorkers safe. Today, I am glad to lead in this cleanup bill on Intro 876, which, as was stated, updates Local Law 86 of 2005, requiring that certain city-owned and city-funded buildings — city, city, city — be built to specific green design and performance standard as set forward in lead. This bill brings the existing law into alignment with updates that have been made since the bill’s passage all those years ago, including updating the baseline inflation year, as was said, ensuring the most recent energy standards are being used, and streamlining the administrative and reporting requirements. On the Housing and Buildings Committee, we work on matters of citywide importance, such as addressing the housing crisis, and ministerial matters, such as ensuring congruence within our complex building codes. Advancing this bill may be a standard for us, a standard cleanup bill for us, but it is one that this council takes seriously when we know that the impacts will be on people’s well-being and safety. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Sanchez. Introduction 124A, sponsored by Councilmember Rafael Salamanca, would ensure that New Yorkers residing in shelters operated by the Department of Homeless Services and the Human Resources Administration have access to housing specialists to help them secure permanent housing. Introduction 431A, also sponsored by Councilmember Salamanca, will require DHS to provide customer service training to all staff members and providers who are working with the public to protect the well-being of people experiencing homelessness. This biannual staff training will include techniques to improve professionalism, increase cultural sensitivity, implement a trauma-informed approach to interactions with shelter residents, and de-escalation. And I now invite Councilmember Salamanca to come forward and discuss his bills.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Good afternoon. Today, I am introducing two bills, Intro 124, which will require HRA and DHS to create the positions of housing specialists in shelters and to submit an annual report on how many people — how many people housing specialists are in each shelter, their caseload and performance reviews for getting New Yorkers into permanent housing. Intro 431 is DHS customer service training, requiring DHS to provide biannual customer service training to all private and public shelter personnel who have direct contact with shelter residents. Training would include techniques to improve professionalism, increase cultural sensitivity, implement trauma-informed approaches to interactions, and conflict de-escalation training. Now, why are these bills important? Well, Intro 124 and Intro 431 are about making sure every New Yorker, especially those in the shelter system, are being treated in a dignified manner. As a member who represents the largest portfolio of shelters in New York City, I’ve seen firsthand what we can be doing better as a city for our shelter population. Intro 124 is important because it tackles two issues important to our city right now through the creation of housing specialists. One, reduces the amount of people who are in the shelter system, and two, helping shelter residents access permanent quality housing. And Intro 431 is a common sense legislation requiring biannual training for DHS staff in shelters. Despite reforms after the Jasmine Hedy incident in December of 2018, we need to ensure agencies are working with New Yorkers who need the most help are being heard in a sympathetic and professional way. And I want to thank you, Madam Speaker, for allowing me to speak today.
Thank you so much. Thank you, Councilmember. Introduction 642A, sponsored by Councilmember Natasha Williams, will require the Administration for Children’s Services to post on their website and submit to the Speaker a quarterly report on the amount of time that children spend in the Nicholas Scapetta Children’s Center, a temporary residence for children removed from their parents or guardians, and other ACS temporary placement facilities. Currently, there is little publicly available data on the length of stay of children placed in these facilities, and the longer children remain in temporary facilities, the greater likelihood of a negative psychological impact. Advocates have testified that children often spend weeks or even months in temporary placement facilities. Last year, ACS testified that 40 children at the Children’s Center have been there for more than 30 days, which was more than half of the total census at the time. This reporting requirement will help the council to identify trends and make informed recommendations in relation to these temporary placement facilities. I invite Councilmember Williams to come up and speak about her bill.
Thank you, Madam Speaker, as always, for your leadership and for advancing so many important measures here today. And shout-outs to my colleagues who are passing some of their first bills. Really, really exciting, and it’s an honor to be in such a wonderful council. So as stated by the Speaker, this bill is about transparency. As a city, it’s our duty to protect the well-being of children and youth who are in our care. As mentioned, presently, there is no annual reporting system, and over the last couple of years, New York City has been cited and docked for having some of the longest length of stays in our childcare centers. And we know that a lot of the children that end up staying in the childcare centers have special needs, and I know the administration is working on this, but we are excited, at the very least, to have information that we hope will aid in the improvement and gradual reducing of the length of stay that children stay in the Children’s Center. It’ll also hold ACS accountable, given this information will now be transparent and public to us, and we also believe it’ll allow for better decision-making and policymaking around this very important issue. So just calling on my colleagues to vote yes on the bill today, and just really thankful also to introduce the resolution honoring Ramadan. As a member who represents a large Muslim community, they are one of the most fast-growing religions in our universe, in our globe, and we are home to close to 1 million Muslims. And so as we get close to Ramadan, I’m just, again, excited to recognize this very important culture and community in New York City. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Councilmember Williams. Next, Introduction 918A, sponsored by our Health Committee Chair, Councilmember Lynn Schulman, would require the Department of Health and Mental Hygiene to develop and implement a citywide diabetes incidence and impact reduction plan. DOHMH would be required to report annually on the number of adults with diabetes in New York City, as well as its strategies and efforts to reduce the prevalence and impact of diabetes. And I now invite Councilmember Schulman to come forward and speak about this very important bill.
Thank you, Madam Speaker, and I just want to say before I give my remarks that you’re hearing about a lot of substantive legislation today, and that’s because we’re the — no offense to my colleague, Councilmember Salamanca, but this is the first female-majority-led city council and led by the first black female speaker, and she has been amazing in making the city a better place. So with that, I am thrilled that the New York City Council will hold a vote to approve Intro 918A, which will call upon the New York City Department of Health and Mental Hygiene to develop and implement a citywide Type 2 diabetes incidence and impact reduction plan to combat diabetes in New York City. The Department of Health and Mental Hygiene would be required to report annually on the number of adults with diabetes in New York City and on its strategies and efforts to reduce the incidence and impact of diabetes. This is the first bill of its kind in New York City. It is predicated on the UN AIDS 909090 program to end HIV and AIDS, and just like the 909090 plan, this legislation is an ambitious effort to reduce Type 2 diabetes, which is a preventable and reversible chronic disease. We are in the process of recovering from the worst public health crisis of our lifetime, which the Speaker mentioned earlier, which caused severe illness and death for thousands of New Yorkers. Many of the devastating outcomes from COVID-19 resulted because of underlying medical conditions, particularly diabetes. That is why I’m extraordinarily proud that the council is set to pass Intro 918A today, and I want to thank Speaker Adams for her leadership on this issue, as well as my many colleagues who signed on as co-sponsors. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you, Councilmember Schulman. And two things: this bill on diabetes is long overdue, long overdue, and I celebrate you for that. And the other thing is that Councilmember Salamanca is part of the Men Who Get It Caucus, and Aiden, if you want to come up —
[laughter]
Aiden, if you want to come up and stand next to Dad, you are always welcome. This is a new house. Lastly, we will be voting on a pair of bills that will increase access to resources for our city’s youth. This council has prioritized policies and efforts to help our students, and the following legislation builds on our work to open doors of possibility for young people who represent the future of our communities. Introduction 403A, sponsored by Education Committee Chair, Councilmember Rita Joseph, who held a marathon hearing until after 10:00 PM last night,
[applause]
would require the Department of Education to provide information to high school students regarding IDNYC municipal identifications, including information on the program, enrollment, and the application form. IDNYC cards are available to all residents age 10 and up, regardless of immigration status, and offer access to city services and benefits, as well as our incredible museums, zoos, and other attractions. I now invite Councilmember Joseph to come up and discuss the importance of her bill.
Marathon league. Marathon, not a sprint, but a marathon. Good afternoon, everyone. Thank you, Speaker Adams. New York City is known as the melting pot and home to many people who came here for a better life and opportunity in New York City, must affirm its commitment to celebrating diversity. Intro 4303A would require the Department of Education to distribute IDNYC applications to all high school students. Far too often, we know that our families and students miss out on incredible resources in New York City and has to offer because they’re simply unaware. Giving every high school student an IDNYC application is epitome of opportunity. As the Chair of the Committee on Education in the New York City Council, I am committed to ensuring that we implement equitable ways to advance resources for our students. As an immigrant from Haiti, I know this will also create access for our families, make them feel welcome in the greatest city in the world, New York. Regardless of the language a student speaks or country they come from, if a student is here, home is here for them. Thanks to many incredible colleagues who supported this important bill and your unwavering commitment to New York City’s students. Thank you so much. Thank you, Madam Speaker, and my colleagues.
And Introduction 236A, sponsored by our Economic Development Committee Chair, Councilmember Amanda Farias, would codify the New York City Ferry Discount Program to be no greater than half of the regular price fare and extended to high school students. This would make students eligible for reduced ferry fare at the beginning of the next school year. The current regular fare is $4, and the discounted fare is $1.35. I invite Councilmember Farias to come to the podium and deliver her remarks on her bill.
I’m very excited, y’all. [laughter] The students are setting sail today. Hi, everyone. I’m Councilmember Amanda Farias, and I’m happy to announce today that the New York City Council will be passing my bill, Intro 236, which will guarantee our students’ affordable access to the New York City Ferry system. I’m a New York City kid, and many more of my colleagues here are today as well. Growing up in the Bronx and across New York City, transit was always and continues to be a major holdup for young people. Our public school students depend on the city to ensure that they can go to and from school efficiently and safely. When your commute is better, your whole day follows suit. And when you have a cheaper, more affordable commute, not only are we impacting our students on how they can afford that commute, but we also uplift and lift that cost for the students’ families. The New York City Ferry has created connections for everyday New Yorkers that were never possible before. A student from the Harbor School told me this morning that she takes the ferry every day from Ferry Point Park in the Bronx down to Pier 11 to get to and from school. Over the last four years, pricing has been an issue for her and her family, as the ferry is the only option for East Bronx residents like her and I to get to and from Manhattan in less than an hour. That’s why I’m proud to be the prime sponsor of Introduction 236A, which will increase transit equity citywide and allow for more students to take the ferry and financially help those who already do. I’m so excited to get this bill passed, in case y’all couldn’t tell, and to make transit equity more of a reality for communities like mine in Council District 18 and everyday New Yorkers. Thank you so much, Speaker, for your leadership, and all of my colleagues that have signed on to this bill. This bill is a bipartisan bill, and I’m super excited and thankful for today. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you so much. Excited, Councilmember. Thank you so much, Councilmembers, for your amazing legislation that you’re passing, and I’m sure that everybody can see that we have prioritized things that have been put in the background for far too long. We are prioritizing families and our children, our communities, and we’re very, very proud of that, and I thank my colleagues for their work on their legislation. Very, very happy. Thank you.
On topic questions?
Everybody with these great bills?
I know.
You saw how excited my colleague was. Throw her a bone.
I’ll do one on topic. About the — sorry, please. About the high school students, are there any income restrictions on who will be eligible for that, or it’s just high school students?
So it includes all students, both in our public schools and private schools. There’s no income requirements. You will get half price so long as you have a school code and you’re a New York City public school student. And it’ll be on the app, and we have paper applications at all of the ferry landings for anyone that doesn’t have a smartphone.
On topic?
No, I’ll go.
Okay. On topic?
We’re on.
Okay, so because we have a lot of folks here, I want to get to everybody, so I will have a question, a follow-up, and then go to the next person. Or I’m the other one, or you’re the last one?
Okay, and I have a talk or two. I get no questions.
For the IDNYC bill, why was that bill introduced, and why does it only focus on high school students? Because it’s 80 and up, right?
Because that was a particular group that was not included, 10 and up, and it also allows them to visit the cultural institutions. It gives them the opportunity to visit zoos, cultural institution, and remember, it also helps our undocumented high school students as well.
When you say the group was not included, are you referring to the high school students?
And our undocumented high school students.
Yeah, so Speaker, kind of going off of reporting that Chris did yesterday, the mayor made this comment about, you know, he could house inmates in a jail that was half-finished regarding the Brooklyn jail being finished later than the 2020/2070. I mean, he didn’t explicitly say half-finished, but that was the general gist of it. I mean, what do you think of those comments? You made it clear out there that the jail has to be — or Rikers has to be closed by 2027, so is that acceptable in any way?
You know, first, I was very happy to hear the mayor acknowledge that, in his own words, that the jails — that the jail had to be closed by 2027, and the law was the law, and that we must comply with the law. As far as how that would go down the line, it’s very difficult to say how that would go down the line. I think that that is a process that we’re going to have to continue to watch. We would hope that everything would be satisfactory by the closure timeframe.
Chris?
Yep, thank you. I’ll try to ask the same question in a slightly different way, but if the Brooklyn jail is not going to be done until 2029, do you think it’s credible that Rikers could be closed by 2027?
I am still holding on to the fact that we are standing with our position that Rikers must be closed by 2027. We are going to work together to do everything that we can. We’re going to utilize our powers as a legislative body to ensure that that happens. Whatever things look like down the road, we are going to stick with compliance of the law, and we are going to do what we can to ensure that it’s done.
And just on a slightly different topic, Councilman Christopher Marte, he has offered not to fire a staffer by the name of Stephen Wong. Stephen came under some scrutiny after these voicemails emerged where he had called a female reporter for Chinese Language Daily, a bunch of misogynist slurs that I’d rather not repeat. He’s saying that he found the language unprofessional, inappropriate, but that he doesn’t believe it amounts to sexist behavior or warrants termination. Just curious, what do you think of how the council can handle that, and what do you think of the alleged comments from the staff?
You know, the council finds derogatory statements and language against women and any person derogatory language to be unacceptable. Generally, the council members are responsible for employment actions related to their respective staff, and this incident has been referred to Councilmember Marte’s office for appropriate action with regard to his own staff.
Thanks. So, Speaker, I understand that the U.S. Organization of Public Service Retirees has written the council on yourself about proposed legislation that they believe would protect their existing healthcare. I understand this is part of — my reporting indicates there was an initial bill that was suggested and put forward by some members that council legal staff said might run afoul of the Taylor Law. We’re just looking for an update on where you are with this, and did you read the letter, and what are your initials? We haven’t really spoken about this since the MLC voted to move ahead.
Yeah, we’ve read the letter, but we’re leaving this conversation to the parties to collective bargain at this time. We’re not considering anything at the moment, but we’re still listening to the various parties involved. When we held the oversight hearing, as you all know, on the idea of changing the administrative code, there was significant opposition to the idea, so we continue to be very deliberative in what we do, so we’re still waiting.
So it’s clear to say that you’re going to be following the process, and in the event that retirees, that you get the same kind of feedback you’re getting, that they’re not satisfied with this, the council’s still going to be looking out for their interest. If they’re not technically represented, depending on the union, UFT does have members that are retired, but there’s a real disconnect that we’ve seen between the retirees and the unions. If you are retired, that the union doesn’t really have a connection to you.
Yeah. As I said, we’re going to give all parties the ability to collectively bargain at this time. Council is still waiting for the information from everybody involved to determine what our next steps will be.
Or the contract. Do I express desire to see the end of contract?
Correct.
You’ve not seen it.
We have not. We have not. Thank you.
First of all, thanks, Speaker, for taking our questions. I appreciate it and the follow-ups. You spoke, when you first became Speaker, expressed support for a ban on insolvency, legislative ban on solvency. That hasn’t happened yet. What would you tell someone now in record on insolvent? What would you tell them?
Well, my response to that are the legislation. We are still waiting to refine that legislation. It is still out with the primary sponsor, which is the public advocate. We know that. There is still some more conversation around the specific language, and it’s very, very complex, as you know. So this is something that we want to make sure is accurate, and it is still out with the primary sponsor. We’re going to take it back. it is still out with the primary sponsor. We're going to take it back and do further deliberation on its finality.
Just a follow-up. You've spoken about how your mom, and you know, talked about the need for the kind of closure of Rikers as a Seattle. Did you ever talk to your mom about solitary confinement? Because generally speaking, you know, the options are, you know, support of keeping assets.
I thank you very much for the question and for invoking my mom. Thank you very much. I was very, very young when my mom worked as an officer on Rikers Island. She, in my older years, she was promoted to captain. So, the issue of solitary did not come up in my memory of those years. So, no, the answer would be no. We've never spoke about solitary. Thank you.
Hi, I have a question on both of the Rikers. Because according to customer Marte, the situation of the Manhattan Borough-based jail is worse than the Brooklyn one, because the contractor hasn't got the renovation permit yet. So, at this point, would you support the customer Marte's proposal that doing some adaption for renovation on the current site instead of completely reconstructing, instead of, okay, to meet the goal of the 2027 timeline?
Well, look, you know, as we know, and we continue to state, the law is the law. It is what it is. Rikers is to be closed by 2027. We will consider options if necessary. Ongoing consideration and conversations must be exactly that ongoing, so there are no definitive answers that I can give you as far as that specific location, but I can let you know that the intention is to go on with our Borough-based jails by 2027.
Julia?
Hi. I want to ask about residential permitting permits. Is that something that the city council's considering? Do you think it would work in everyday living cities, especially if it would offset the cost of emptying a block from the city with $5,000,000 million?
Well, you know, some of my colleagues have similar proposals for specific neighborhoods. It's something that we have to collaborate on as a body. We're going to review and discuss the Senate's proposal as it is. There are different thoughts about it. I happen to think that every neighborhood does not operate in a monolith or in a monolithic perspective, so there have to be specific considerations for each district and each neighborhood.
I have a last question for you, Nolan.
Madam Speaker, Jonathan Yedden is on the council's financial staff. He also is, has a lobby firm that has clients that have substantial interest before the city, including items funded by the budget he's helping to craft. How is that not a conflict of interest?
City employees are permitted by COIB, by the Conflict of Interest Rules, to own businesses and consult campaigns outside of their city time, as long as they follow all guidance from COIB. There is every indication that this has happened in Mr. Yedden's case. All indications are that this employee has been in compliance with the rules. So, this really isn't an issue, and the story wasn't accurate. If a council member has any issue or concerns with their staff, they should raise it with the council, with me, or appropriate entities first, rather than making what may be interpreted as poorly informed accusations to the press. Period.
If I could follow up on that, he's on the staff. He has a lobby firm. He represents, for example, the teachers' union. Their contract's funded by the budget that you guys will be crafting and be voting on. Just as one example, how is that not a conflict of interest, and why should anyone who hasn't hired Jonathan Yedden think they're going to get a fair shake out of this body?
Well, Nolan, I'm going to basically repeat what I just said. All rules were followed and are in compliance with the city's Conflict of Interest Board. There is no untoward story here. As long as this business is conducted inside of COIB's rules, which has been done, which quite frankly is done in many, many places, as far as we know, then there really is no conflict.
My last question is, I have a question for Councilmember Farias about the ferry price. So, the bill, since it was introduced, the price of the ferry has gone up, and I was wondering, you know, if this is about truly giving students an alternate form of transportation, currently, they can take the bus and the subway for free, given the fact that, you know, since the time you introduced the bill, the ferry price has since gone up. You are slashing it in half, but it is higher than I think you would have anticipated with the bill and the fact that, you know, the buses and subways are free. How is this really a choice, especially for low-income families?
Sure. So, I'll say, first and foremost, it's an active choice by a lot of students to actually pay an $8 round trip to utilize our ferry currently to get to and from school. Second to that, we have the student metro fares that are varying degrees of fees. Some students do have a completely free fare that they can utilize within their school timing. Some students pay $0.25, $0.50, $1, and so on and so forth, depending on the income in their households. What this is doing is eliminating the option of using income as a criteria, and saying we're going to do 50% for students to utilize it currently, right now, as a standing. I think, to what you alluded to, yes, I hope down the line, we can look at its fiscal impact and say, is this a cost that we can maybe completely eliminate for students? But I believe we have to start somewhere, especially for young people when they're already paying an $8 round trip or $40 a week, because it is their fastest commute to and from school. Thank you.
Where did Aiden go?
We did it.
Aiden. Thank you for that.
Aiden can always come up. Hi, Aiden. How you doing?